We're going to call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Here.
Councilmember Hewer.
Here.
Councilmember Campion.
Here.
Councilmember Lamson.
Here.
Mayor Powers.
Here. I guess first we ought to say there was no closed session, so there's nothing to report back. Now we'll have a little silent prayer and then the flag salute.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Donna, would you please read the video statement?
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, Local Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T Universe Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Friday, August 18th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, August 19th at 9:00 a.m. The city council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website and a DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Okay, is there any, sorry, any agenda approval additions and/or deletions? And conferring with Donna, we're going to move, if it's all right with everybody, G5 up to right after the treasurer's report, so things will fall in a better order. Is that okay, council?
Yes.
Good with that.
Right now we have presentations, the Galt Gators championship recognition.
Mayor and city council, thank you for having us here tonight. We have some swimmers as well as head coach Ricky Hegner and assistant coach Andres Ramos here with us. So this year, we won our fourth consecutive championships and dual meet. We were undefeated with the dual meet season. This is our second year in the Eureka Conference, which is, there's five conferences in the Northern California Swim League. Before that, we were in the Motherlode Conference and we won those two years in a row as well. This year, we came in first with the Galt Gators, then Dixon Dolphins, Sunrise Laguna Creek Gators, and Fulton Al Camino. So we have some swimmers in attendance and I'd like to recognize everyone who has won an award. I don't know if you'd like everyone to come up now or...
What do you want me to do?
Well, we're going to get a picture, so we might as well, Galt Gators, if you'd like to come up with Ricky and, Coach Ricky and Coach Andres.
Come on up here and form a little circle, turn around, look at the audience. Show them your pretty faces and give us a big smile.
So this year, we had close to 300 swimmers. This is our second largest swim team that we've had. Our largest was probably, I believe, well, it was 344 swimmers in about 1991. I think a lot of it has to do with our coaches and with our swimmers. So those that were here and that were recognized with awards this year, we have coaches awards. Seven, eight girls, we have Courtney Brower and Sidney Taylor. And then in nine, 10, we have Taylor Klein, who also won another award. We have, in 13, 14, we have Ms. Ariana Ortega. And in 15, 18s, we have Marie Carey. For most improved, in six and under, we have Ryan Brower, who's up in front. And in 13, 14, we have Ava Lone. And then for high points, we have Mr. Alex Ortega, seven, eight boy. Maggie Tomlinson, seven, eight girl. Luke Ortega, nine, 10 boy. Sofia Munoz, 11, 12 girl. Helen Carey, 13, 14. And Joseph Lofoz, 15, 18. And then we'd also like to especially recognize Helen Carey, who's standing right in the middle. She is actually our Gator of the Year. So that, 13, 14. We just wanted to share our season with you and congratulate them. We're looking forward to more successful seasons of this one and hopefully Coach Andres and Ricky plan to come back. I don't know. So Al, can you take a couple pictures?
Okay, you guys are celebrities today.
At least smiled. So thank you, guys. Thank you for coming. If you can see, most of them are wet. They just came from...
Great.
So we finished at 5:45 and they rushed over. So thank you for coming and we will see you guys at the pool.
Okay, next we have Brenda Renfro, certificate of recognition.
Just go ahead and take them with you.
Before I read this recognition, I really have to say something for Brenda, because I was on the committee before I got thrown off by Armando. We always like to say that. And turning this Fourth of July celebration around was instrumental with Parks and Rec and Brenda. Bringing back the parade was one of the most fabulous things, I think, that's ever been done in the city. It brings everybody out and what the whole idea was, we wanted to make sure that everybody came out and had a great day on the Fourth of July, or third, or second, or whenever. And that parade just brought the town out and so many people have been ranting and raving about it from the get-go. You took the bull by the horns and you really, really did a fantastic job. And we're really sorry that you're leaving, but we have faith that it will continue in the wonderful way that you started it. And we can't thank you enough. So I'm going to read this certificate of recognition from the rest of the city council. The city council of the city of Galt wishes to present this certificate recognizing your substantial commitment of time and energy as the Independence Day Celebration Parade Coordinator for the last five years. By volunteering your time, you have led by example, motivating others to serve in our community. We wish you continued success in your future endeavors.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, it's been a long five years, but I've enjoyed every minute of it. I've put my heart and soul into the parade and it started off, you know, a bit difficult, but as the years got through it, as the years went on, I should say, it got easier and easier for me. So like she said, I hope it continues to be a success and if you need any of my help, I'm always here for you. But it's time for me to drop the, what do you call it?
The baton.
The baton. And yeah, and move over, so somebody else can take and enjoy it as much as I have. But I, like I said, I hope that the person that handles it next time does just as good a job and has fun at it as well. But thank you, everybody, for your decision to let me do it and give me free rein for all these years, because I've really enjoyed it myself. So thanks again.
Thanks again.
Okay, now the Planning Commission Annual Report to the city council, and I think our chair, Mr. Craig Morris, is here to enlighten us.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Craig Morris and I am the chairperson for the Galt Planning Commission. It is my pleasure to present, council, with the Planning Commission Annual Report for fiscal year 2016-2017. The Planning Commission worked on a few projects this year. We approved two tentative subdivision map extensions, one for the Fairway Oaks Project and the other for River Oaks III. We also approved the map amendment for River Oaks III Project. We reviewed and made recommendations on the architectural plans for the Dry Creek Oaks Senior Project. In addition, the Planning Commission made recommendations to the city council on three ordinance amendments. They included allowing hen chickens in the city limits, changing the formula for dedication of parklands, and the ordinance for allowing personal cultivation of cannabis. The Planning Commission also approved the annual CIP General Plan Commission check and recommended approval of the General Plan and Housing Element Progress Report. I'd like to thank my fellow commissioners for their efforts. Vice Chair Liam McFadden, Commissioners Sherry Daly, Doug Canal, and Paul Sandu. A special thank goes out to the Planning Commission staff for their dedication and hard work, led by our director, Chrissy Ryas. That concludes the Planning Commission Report to council. I'd like to thank the council for the opportunity to serve the community and provide this report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Craig. Hey Donna, would you please read public comment?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address council on any agenda item during consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council and limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the clerk.
No speaker sheets. Okay, let's go to the information and consent calendar. Donna, would you please read the three items?
Minutes of the regular meeting of July 18th, 2017. Receive and file warrants for the period ending August 1st, 2017, and the Sacramento County Local Hazard Mitigation Plan update.
Do I have a motion, council?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, Cruz and Hewer, call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Powers.
Aye. Passes five to zero. Okay, now we're down to the treasurer's office. The treasurer's report for the period ending June 2017, and that's to you, Sean.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, council members. Before you, you have the treasurer's report as of June 2017. And I just want to hit a few highlights as far as what has happened in the last quarter. As, just to let you know, 52% of our investable funds are in government agencies, which are Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, Federal Home Loan Bank. Those are bonds, they're callable step-up bonds. 26% is in LEAF, which is the state's local agency investment fund. And 22% is a mix between, say, local CDs, non-local CDs, money markets, and our checking account. So that's pretty much the mix that we have. During this past quarter, based upon some prompting, farmers and merchants raised their money market rate from a half percent to three-quarters of a percent, which was good. It's good in these days for a money market account. I still took out one and a half million out of it and put it in LEAF, and the reason is because LEAF was paying a little bit more. Also during the quarter, we funded the wastewater debt reserve account. And as far as interest rates go, LEAF is now a little bit over 1%. As of the end of June, it was .98, so it was approaching 1%. But now it's actually over 1%. And that doesn't sound like much, but LEAF has not been at 1% for the last seven years. So just to put everything in perspective. And also tonight, whenever I do the June report, I also provide the amount of interest earned for the last fiscal year. So for the year 2016-2017, the city earned $413,000 in interest. In comparison, 10 years ago, so the '06-'07 fiscal year, the city earned about $2 million in interest. Of course, that's when interest rates were a lot higher. Now also in comparison about three years ago, we were on around $200,000 in interest. So again, the amount of interest we earn simply depends upon the interest rates at the time, which is common sense. So with that, I ask that you accept the treasurer's report as of June 2017. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, Campion and Cruz, call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Powers.
Aye. Passes five to zero. So Armando, we're going to move you up and have the Armando Day Celebration Review, please. I mean, the Armando Day. It is kind of the Armando Day. You do work awfully hard on it. The Independence Day Celebration Review.
Where am I pointing this thing at? Good evening, mayor and city council. Thank you for allowing me to present this. Armando Saliz, Parks and Rec Director. Today, I will be presenting the IDC 2017 Cost and Revenue Review. We have our founding father sponsor, Cal Waste, returned in 2017. Thank you, Mr. Vacarez, I don't know if he's here today, for his continued support in this event. We could not have this event without him. Returning sponsors, SMUD, EG&E, F&amp;M Bank, and a new sponsor this year is the Galt Chamber of Commerce. In total, we collected $11,000 in sponsorships. And to get into specific events, I'll be reviewing that now. So our fireworks in the pool, great time, as you can tell by our lifeguard here. A great family event. It's $15 for a family pass of four. We collected a little over $1,200 in revenues. Major expenditure is our lifeguards for the event. Our IDC parade, again, thank you, Brenda. You've grown this parade into what it is today. Without you, it never would have happened, so thank you. I do have big shoes to fill in the future and I will try not to get a call from you on July 5th saying... This is a great event with our military vehicles, our flag on C Street, and down at the bottom, you see some of our local VIPs. The major cost of this event is our Police Department and Public Works Department for the street closures. Again, they did a great job in having this event. There were no issues that I'm aware of, and I thank both departments for their help in it. Entertainment, Veterans Field, on our Cal Waste stage, we have the Michael Beck Band, the new band this year. We also have our Softcom flag. We had the Cert Team out. San Joaquin Delta College was out with an informational booth. And the two bottom are the Boy Scouts and the Grange Hall provided, had food for sale and is a moneymaker for them. The cost for the entertainment, it's about $1,500. And then the porta potty rentals, that was the most important part. That's the most expense. Kid Zone, you could ride a bull, climb a rock, or jump in a house. Parents love it. They're in a secure area in the corner. It's a $5 fee to get into this and it's unlimited rides from up until 9:30 till the fireworks shoot off. The majority of the cost is the rental for the jumpers and staff to observe it. We do get a little revenue on this one, but not quite enough to offset the cost for it. Our horse shee tournament, great for youth, old, and the serious player that you see down at the bottom. The two here, father and son, Boostamani family, they won the doubles. It's $5 per person. And the major cost is with the employee to run the tournament, an all-day tournament. We have advertising that we have to pay for, and we have our fireworks fencing that we block off the one-way for the fireworks to keep our patrons safe. In total, you see our expenditure revenues and profit loss for the whole events. So in total, we have $11,000 in sponsorship, a little over $2,500 in revenues. Event costs a little over $11,000, which leaves us a little over $2,500 left. The reason we have some money left over is last year, 2016, we had a little money left over. I wound up buying banners, posters. I did all that purchasing with last year's money. So this year, what I want to do is I want to, we need to get some more easy ups. We have electrical needs, replace some worn-out flags, and with banners for next year. So that's what I'll be doing with this money that was left over, trying to prepare for next year's event. Our IDC fireworks app, this was a feature added at the last minute, provided by us by J&amp;M Displays. What you could do is download this app from them. This would come up. You would select the available events, which would be the City of Galt, Independence Day Celebration. It would tell you it would start at 9:30. At 9:30, it would start playing music, fireworks sponsored by, and then during, while the music's playing, oops, oh, sorry. Fat fingers. So anyways, sorry. While the music was coordinated with the fireworks, it would show our sponsors' names on there. We'll get that information out a lot sooner next year. Just wanted to make you aware of this, that we added this to our fireworks show. And thank you, Councilwoman Lamson, for the picture. It's one of my favorite pictures I've seen of the event, so thank you.
Thank you.
That takes us to our fifth annual Tom Memorial 5K Run with the help of Robin Nelson and Sharon Hafner that have been with us. The profits from this year's event will benefit the Galt Police Department Explorer Program, Galt Youth Commission, and the Parks and Rec Scholarship Program. The 5K sponsors, Kaiser, Cordon Blue, Cardinal Glass, Quick Stop, and Champ are sponsors for 2017. Let me show you a couple pictures of the event. You have our, what is my favorite part of the 5K, the lining up and starting of the event on C Street under the flag. We have Robin here, who's, who, if not for her, this event probably wouldn't be going on. We have some very important people here. I don't know who those people are, but they are there. And we have our four-legged friends down at the bottom. I'd just like to add, this one is very patriotic and he also is my dog.
He's very cute.
I don't know if you guys saw the kid riding around on his skateboard in the camera. His name is Trevor Mention. And I was trying to figure out what he was doing that day, because he just didn't look, he looked out of place. But what he was doing, he was filming a commercial for our next year's 5K event.
Oh, wow.
I'm going to show it to you right now. So Trevor took it upon himself to do that for us, and I want to thank him for that. He did a great job.
Is he here by any chance?
He is not.
Oh.
So we'll be using that for next year's advertising on our website.
That's really nice.
He's a Galt High student, correct?
So to review the 5K cost of revenues, we had $2,500 in sponsorships, registration of $4,300. Event costs a little over $41. Total donation of $26,997. It'll be distributed in this manner to each one of these groups for a total of $1,755. And what we're going to do is we're going to carry over $942. Sponsorships are becoming a little harder and harder to find, so what we want to do is make sure we don't short-change this event next year. So we're going to carry over the $942 to next year's event to make sure we can still provide everything that we've been doing in the past. So I'd be glad to take any questions that you might have for the event.
I just think it's a great day. I think it's a fun day for all of us to come out and meet our, for us, meet our constituents and everybody else, to meet everybody else in the town, and it's just a really nice day. Everybody is always so happy, so it's nice to have a happy day.
Yeah, it is.
So thank you so much for all your hard work and thank Parks and Rec for us, too, please.
And I'm sorry, I need to thank my staff, Monica, Leslie, Crystal. Without them and the support of Public Works and PD, it wouldn't be possible. So I really, honestly, they just keep me in line. That's all they do, so my staff's great. Thank you.
They are. Pretty good staff. Okay, now we're at the city council office discretionary funds, me, and mine is to allocate $1,000 next year to the Independence Day Parade. Are we going to vote on them all separately? Do we have to vote?
Yes, I do need to vote.
Okay, so can we vote on mine, please? So moved.
Second.
Hewer and Cruz, call for the vote, please.
Councilmember Cruz.
Aye.
Sorry. Councilmember Hewer.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Powers.
Aye. Now to you, Lori.
Same thing.
Same thing for Lori. I move to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, me and Mark or Kurt, call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Powers.
Aye. Five to zero. And now to you, Paige.
Yes, I would like to donate $500 of my discretionary fund to the Beautification Committee. We've become aware and had a lot of complaints in the community about the deterioration of our Christmas decorations over the years. Some of them have been up probably 20 years. And this small amount will help make a chunk so we can replace a few things this Christmas as we, as the committee gets more active and works towards fundraisers, because we're going to need thousands of dollars to eventually replace all those Christmas decorations. But that'll be a little bit of a start.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, Cruz, Hewer, call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Powers.
Aye. Passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Now we're at the Community Development Department, South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan Update. Chris Ryas.
Good evening, Chris Ryas, Community Development Director. The item we have before you is a presentation on the South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan. This is an exciting time for the project, as the many years of hard work for this project are now finally coming to fruition. The project environmental documents are out for public review and there now appears to be a light at the end of the tunnel. The Habitat Conservation Plan will be of great benefit to the city of Galt by streamlining the permit process relating to biology impacts for development projects. In addition, it'll also provide mitigation land for development projects. And in general, mitigation banks are becoming more and more difficult to find locally in Galt, so this is of extreme importance to the city. We have Bill Zebra and Richard Rodmacher from SAC County that will provide a presentation on the conservation plan and give you an update and status of where we are. After they are complete, they and staff will be available to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Chris, and Madam Mayor, members of the council. It's a pleasure to be here tonight to give you an update on the plan. I want to just, what I'm going to do is just review kind of the general adoption schedule, where we are in the process, and then provide a brief, kind of high-level plan overview, talk a bit about the governance and economics, and then the amount of work we've been doing on public outreach, which is really quite extensive. And we're right in the middle, kind of nearing the end of the formal public review process there, so, and then open it to your questions. So there's no action tonight. We're just, this is informational and obviously to respond to any questions you may have. On June 2nd, we achieved the major milestone of getting the documents listed in the federal register. It's been many, many years in coming, and there's actually two processes going on. The federal register under the NEPA review, and then the state clearinghouse for the CEQA review. We are conducting a 90-day public review process. And then... of next year, with the hope that we will achieve adoption with all the partner agencies by spring of 2018, and then submit for the final permits. So with luck, and I think we have a lot of momentum now, we should have those permits in hand later next year, 2018. Just to kind of, some reminders on the structure of this program. It's a partnership among the local agencies, Sacramento County, yourselves, the City of Galt, and the City of Rancho Cordova, the Capital Southeast Connector, and the County Regional Sanitation District. Before I go on, too, let me also mention that Rich, well, Chris did mention Rich is here, Rich Rodmacher. He's, he's worked many, many years on the plan, and really a lot of the credit goes to him for the hard work he's put in. Gene Endicott, next to Rich out there, is also a consultant on the public outreach program and is doing a great job helping us in that part of the effort. So just as a reminder, why are we doing this? Why have the, why has there been all this work over the many, many years? I think it's, it's clear that all of the stakeholders, all of the development stakeholders, the environmental stakeholders, some of the landowners, the government officials, really feel that the current permit process is very costly, time-consuming, inefficient, and does not lead to good outcomes in terms of the conservation. That's a really important concept to kind of understand here, because it's a fragmented approach rather than this kind of holistic approach we're taking. Also, fundamentally, the Fish and Wildlife Services made a policy decision that they are no longer going to process, be processing the individual permits under what's Section 7 of the Endangered Species Act, but rather moving towards these HCPs under Section 10. So all future development now will be required to come in under them. And it's not just here in Sacramento County, but some of the surrounding counties that are in the middle of their processes as well. So those are some compelling reasons. I think the goal here is to come up with a much more predictable, efficient, faster process that works better for the regulated community, but also, very importantly, achieves better conservation. And then it will bring the decision-making process to the local level, which I'll talk about here in a minute. So what is this process, what are the permits that we're looking to achieve? The really unique feature about this program is it's, it's an integrated program that will combine some permit processes that have never been, been combined before. First of all, the Federal Endangered Species Act administered by the Federal Fish and Wildlife Service, but also importantly, the Clean Water Act, Section 404, the Clean Water Act administered by the Corps of Engineers. So two very, very different acts, two, you know, two different, they're administered differently, and a lot of times they don't work well together. Now, we've brought these agencies along to cooperate together to come up with a coordinated approach. There's also a similar process at the state level, under the State Endangered Species Act, and then the Water Quality, Clean Water Act, Section 401, which is the water quality component administered by the, by the Regional Water Quality Control Board. So all of those now are part of this comprehensive program for permitting. And so this kind of outlines some of the key planned components. We're looking at achieving 50-year permits. So the local entity, and I'll talk about the JPA, we've been in front of you before that, previously on that, and the local plan partners will all hold permits in common, a permit in common for both the Endangered Species Act and the California Endangered Species Act, both the federal and state. There will be a conservation strategy protecting 28-some species. So rather than a one-off approach, one by one, we're doing it comprehensively so that we don't have to go back in case, we're covering species that may be listed in the future, that aren't right now, but may be, as well as the ones that are listed. And then, as I mentioned before, this Integrated Aquatic Resources Program under Section 404 will lead to a more streamlined approach for Clean Water Act permitting. And then, of course, the EIS, EIR, it's a combined document under NEPA/CEQA, and then it'll be mitigated through a, or implemented through a mitigation fee program as well as local ordinances. So I probably have about five more slides, and then we can open it up for any questions you may have. Again, a reminder on the plan area, it's most of South Sacramento County, roughly quite a 318,000-acre area bordered by Highway 50 to the north, El Dorado, and parts of Amador to the east, San Joaquin County to the south, and pretty much the Sacramento River on the west. The gray areas up there show the area where urban development is projected to occur, including all of your sphere of influence. So that's where the impacts would occur, and as much as 33,600 and some acres, over that 50-year period, so really a long-term vision. The preserve system, then, would be about a 36,000-acre preserve, and there are some preserves that have already been set aside within the county, within the urban development area that have been agreed to by developers, but most of that would occur outside the area, in the area outside the gray. All from willing sellers, you know, no eminent domain used in this process at all. So the strategy is really to look for large blocks of habitat interconnected, meeting certain biological goals, and then building from existing preserves, and then also providing conditions on future development so that they comply with, with the guidelines set forth in the plan to protect the species. I talked about the Aquatic Resources Program. Again, there's a separate plan. There's the HCP and the Aquatic Resources Plan that, rather than looks, look at small little pockets of vernal pools and so forth, looks at it more at a watershed-level basis. So landscape-level watershed protection is provided, as well as a streamlined 404 permit process. The locals will, we will actually hold the permit for small projects up to two acres of fill, called a programmatic permit, but then for larger projects, the Corps will still issue those, but if projects aren't in compliance with our plan, that will be considerably streamlined over what it is today. And then it all, as I mentioned before, will be implemented locally through an ordinance and fee program. This slide speaks to that a little bit. Developer fees mitigate, and we have both, there's a component required for preservation under the Endangered Species Act, and there's a component required for the, what they call compensatory mitigation under, under the Clean Water Act administered by the Corps. Rather than having two different fees, we have one. We're going to have one committee with the regulators together, working to do that kind of in a, in a much more efficient way. Also, we'll provide for an endowment to ensure long-term operation and maintenance of the preserves. I mentioned, wetland, the ordinances will be part of it, both an implementing and a wetlands protection ordinance, and that's down the road for your consideration, and then a jumpstart program, which means we're actually out there right now talking to some landowners who are interested in, in selling conservation easements to us at this stage. So, and we're feeling pretty confident we're going to have some lands established, set aside by the time we get those permits, which will be a big advance, both in helping us get our permits and also achieving the goals of the plan. And then finally, importantly, the implementation will occur, I should actually say the South Sacramento Conservation Agency. That's been, we've been before you on, on that some time ago, earlier in the year. The JPA was approved by all the governing, members of the governing board. It's been authorized by the state. We haven't actually formed it and got it operating yet, but we will be doing that fairly soon, probably late fall. And because of the JPA itself, we'll need to adopt the plan, as well as your council and the other, the council and the board, the council from Rancho, and anybody holding the permit in common. So the one thing I would say is that you will need to make an appointment to that board. You'll have one seat on that board, as was part of that agreement. So, so that is kind of the, the plan that we're, we're at right now in terms of implementation. I have two final slides on public outreach, and I'm not going to read all of this off, but it just, suffice it to say, it's been extensive. This is all the outreach that's occurred, at least on my watch, and I've been involved about four years, prior to the Federal Register listing in, in June, and we've met, probably held at least 50 stakeholder meetings. All of the county CPACs, their community advisory boards, all of the key stakeholders, the ECOS, the BIA, cattlemen's, the Farm Bureau, et cetera, individual landowners, developer representatives, and then briefings in front of the various jurisdictions involved, as well as keeping our congressional representatives up to speed on this. And they all seem to be very supportive. I mean, they, there's a lot of enthusiasm about the fact that we're at this stage. So since January 2nd, well, we have 18 workshops planned. I think we've done probably 12, 13, or 14 to date. We have one every day next week, kind of moving towards the end of that public review period, and they're all mentioned here, again, the CPACs, all the same groups, you know, that I mentioned previously, and then ongoing meetings with the individual stakeholders. So that will conclude on September 5th. Then we're going to respond to the comments and then prepare the final documents, and we'll be back in front of you again. It will be after the first of the year to commence the approval process. So that concludes my presentation right now, and I'm happy to entertain any questions or comments you may have at this stage.
Council?
You addressed, I think, one of my, at least one of the questions I had with regard to property acquisition.
Yes.
At the time, the permits are, or at the time the plan or permits have been issued. And it's still my understanding that this is a willing seller operation. I think you mentioned that as well.
Correct.
So there is no eminent domain.
Correct, yes.
The, I'm just curious as to how much land is available, or do you have any idea of what might be available at the time that permit is issued?
Right, in terms of to actually...
It uses mitigation.
What the inventory, well, okay, so what we're actually working on? It's hard to say exactly. There, first of all, just to kind of break it down a little bit, there are five major master plans that are located within the urban development area. Two are in the county, and, three are in the county, excuse me, and two are in Rancho Cordova. As part of their planning process, some are specific plans, they've agreed to actually set aside preserves.
I see.
And some have already been approved, okay? And one actually has through what we call an on-ramp, able to achieve their permits already. Those are kind of locked in.
Good.
So I'm not sure the acreage on those, but that's very valuable vernal pool habitat within the, maybe their core recovery area. In addition, there are a couple of major landowners that we're talking to right now, and we're advancing to a kind of a letter of intent stage, and one of the plan partners may have some available funding to help us jumpstart the program before the fees start coming in.
Okay.
But all told, it could be five to maybe eight or 10,000 acres.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's significant.
Yeah, it could be, it could, I don't want to...
Sure.
...oversell that, but that's sort of the numbers that we're looking at at this stage, yes. Which would, again, if you're looking at 35, 36,000 acres over a 50-year period, that's a tremendous...
Tremendous job.
...start, yes.
Oh, yeah, it would just be, it would, it'd appear difficult if you're relying solely on the mitigation fees in order, because you've got to have some advanced funding somewhere.
Yes, yes.
In order for it to really work efficiently.
Right, exactly. So, so that's kind of where, where we're at there.
Very pleased where you're at.
Thank you.
Rich will have to retire one of these days.
We can't until we get well rolling here, yes. Thank you, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Council, anything else? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Thanks.
Okay, now we're on to the Finance Department. Public Educational and Governmental Funding Grant, that's to you, Emily.
Good evening, Mayor. I've asked Vera Wittenberg, our newest accounting manager, to present this item.
No, no power. Good evening, Mayor Powers and councilmembers. My name is Vera Wittenberg. Like Emily mentioned, I am one of the accounting managers here at the city. What I have for you tonight is the Public Educational Governmental Grant. It's otherwise known as the PEG grant. This is an annual grant that we receive from the Sacramento Metropolitan Cable Television Commission. The commission receives these funds and passes it along to local agencies to help better improve communications with the public. We've requested $55,427 to help, and that's going to be going towards monitors and to help with the closed captioning, improved microphones. And then we're also going to do monitors out in the lobby, so whenever there's overflow, we can still see the presentations out in the lobby. And then this is also going to go towards some of the backend improvements. The work needs to be completed by the end of May. We have to submit everything to the commission by the end of June, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Council? Okay, Donna, would you please then, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Donna, would you please then read the recommended action?
Adopt a resolution accepting the public educational and governmental funding in the amount of $55,427 from the Sacramento Metropolitan Cable Television Commission for infrastructure improvements to the city's cable broadcast and appropriate the project funding.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll go with Hugher and Lamson. Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugher?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye, thank you. And thank you very much for the report, and that's really nice, Emily, that you let some of your staff come up and give reports.
We always want to give people opportunities.
I think that's great. Okay, now we're at the Public Works Department. Authorization to purchase a wheel loader and compact track loader for the wastewater treatment plant. That's to you, Mr. Winkler.
Madam Mayor and councilmembers, we're pleased to be bringing to a conclusion our multi-year investment plan, for which we'll be talking in a moment about wastewater rates to repay SRF loans, but three years ago when we applied for the initial SRF loan, we knew that we were going to need some additional equipment to accommodate operationally what we're bringing online with the recently planned upgrades. And so we're now coming down on a expenditure deadline for the last couple of pieces of equipment that were planned for in that grant application. Need to expend those in the next month or so, and so we'll give you a quick overview. I'd like to introduce Alice Bernardino. She's our, one of our staff engineers, and she'll give you a real quick overview of what we're purchasing.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. Thank you. So what I have here is I want to provide you guys some information for the, about the equipment that we have, what we need, and why we need it to support the items before you. This is a comparison of what we have versus what we need. So these are track loaders. We have, we own, the wastewater treatment plant owns a track loader to the left. We use it to remove the dried solids off the drying sand beds, and it's at the end of its life, and it's just too small. As you can see, what we need is two to three times the size of what we have. This is to show you what we're currently doing. So we're taking the dried solids from the sand beds, and you can see that the track loader's tilted forward because it's too heavy, and it's bouncing back and forth, unstable, because it's just too small, and it's at the end of its life. So from here, we take the dried solids over to the sludge pad. I love that. So the, the sand beds hold about, they usually have about 50 tons of dried solids on them. So we take the track loader, move those solids over to the sludge bed, sludge pad, and then also on the sludge pad are solids that are generated from our screw press. It was installed as a part of the recent plant upgrade project. And so, and the screw press generates about 40 tons of solids a day. And so what we don't have here is something to keep the solids mixing, to keep them dry, and also to make room for the other solids that we're generating every day. And so what we need is a wheel loader, which is to the left, to the right of the screen. What we have is to the left, it's a backhoe. A backhoe is to dig trenches, and so we're not using it for its intended purposes. And as you can see, what we need is over three times the size of what we have. And so for this... something to keep the solids mixing, to keep them dry, and also to make room for the other solids that we're generating every day. And so what we need is a wheel loader, which is to the le, to the right of the screen. What we have is to the left. It's a backhoe. A backhoe is to dig trenches, and so we're not using it for its intended purposes. And as we, you can see, what we need is over three times the size of what we have. And so for this reason, I am recommending a resolution to adopt and give authorization to the city manager to execute a contract, authorize a contingency amount, and authorize the city manager to execute contract amendments.
Thank you very much for your report.
Mm-hmm.
And thanks for getting it together so quick. I had taken it off the consent calendar because it was a large amount of dollars, and I think that that's what we need to know. And that was a really good report, and it was short and sweet, and I thank you very much for it.
Thank you. And if you have any questions?
Questions?
I'd be happy to answer.
Um, so...
Quick comment?
Okay.
Just, Mr. Winkler, can you explain, so the public knows as well, where these money, funds are coming from? It's not general fund monies?
That's correct. It is, it is included within the, kind of the final expenditure of our $26 million in SRF loans, which the next item we'll be talking about, and how do we pay those loans back, and some of the things that we need to go with it. But it will be coming from both wastewater user fees and some connection capacity fee revenues.
Thank you.
And thank you again for your report. Donna, would you please read the recommended action?
Adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with RGW equipment in the amount of $226,118.73 for the purchase of a wheel loader and compact track loader, authorizing a contingency in amount of $18,770.63 for accessories, and authorizing the city manager to execute amendments to your agreement within the approved contingency amount.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Cruz and Lamson, call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Huer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye. Pass five to zero. Okay, now we're at the wastewater cost of service and rate study workshop. This is to you, continued from July 18th. This is to you, Mr. Winkler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is the second in a series of three planned workshops, and more if counsel would so desire. We're trying to sort of educate both the council and the public at large as to the, the expenditure obligations that we need to pay back as part of these $26 million of loans that have been taken out. And so we had a number of questions back on July 18th from both the public and from the council and comments. And so we're going to try to answer those, as well as add to sort of the workshop, work-study session, talking about capacity fees tonight, which would be more developer impact fees. So Mark Clarkson will start us off.
Mayor, City Council, it's really hard to follow that video of the sludge being moved off the drying beds. She was going to bring buckets here, but we declined that.
Yeah.
Buckets. Anyway, getting, getting to our, our second study session that we have, as Mr. Winkler indicated, there were a series of questions and comments and concerns that were brought up at the last one. So we're going to go through that, but first, we're going to give you a, a quick little rundown of what occurred at the last meeting and where we stood on the rates that we had proposed at that time. And we're going to have Abib Isaac from Ruff Talis who's going to give that portion of it.
Thank you, Mark. Good evening, Mayor Powers, council members, city staff, and the public. As Mark mentioned, we're kind of going to be tag teaming on this PowerPoint presentation. I can give a rundown on where we were back in July 18th, to summarize the lead into the questions that you had. That Mark will take over, and then there'll be some, there's additional analysis that actually helped give some results and, and input that you'll see. So when we started, we wanted to see where you are currently in your financial outlook. And what we showed you was the bar graph here extends for about ten years, and it shows your expenses based on different types of expense, which is shown by different colors. And then the trend line that goes horizontally, that is your current revenues that are coming in. And typically, what you want to see is that your, your horizontal trend line exceeds those bars, which means your revenues are more than your expenses. And one of the main contributing factors to this is the fact that you do have a new SRF loan for the additional expansion, and that is already, already an obligation that you must pay. So now we're coming in the rear to then update the, the cost of service analysis, the report. So even if we didn't do anything to the rates in terms of cost of service, we would still need to tack on the debt service payments to all the accounts. So this is the outlook when we look at just, including the SRF loan number two, and also looking at any revenues that are available to offset and mitigate any type of increases to the rates. So what you see here is the trend line now is a little bit better over the bars. And what you'll see, you have some red portion on top, which means there's a little bit of surplus revenue that could go into your reserves and fund your capital that's above your operating cost. And the way that that's possible is we incorporated the cost per count for the SRF loan number two, just like what you did in previous years for SRF loan number one. And then there's also $900,000 a year of available funds of capacity revenue that is basically correlates to the new development share of the SRF number, number two loan. So then they're paying their fair share amount. And then you'll see it spike in the fourth year fiscal year 2022, because now those offsets are not available anymore. Granted, you might have more revenues that come in, but then it shows that it's a way to slowly, have the ability to slowly build up rates to cover that expense in 2022 instead of trying to cover it tomorrow.
Mm-hmm.
And then in, on July 18th, our proposed financial plan showed this new trend line in black, which, which is where you want to be. And this still incorporates the offsets. You now see that there's additional revenue above your operating expense. This is just operating. This is not include capital. So then this additional revenue above your operating expense could fund your reserves and fund your capital expenses over the next five to 10 years. And to achieve this, what we presented was you would need an eight percent revenue adjustment in year one, this, this current fiscal year, and then followed by six percent revenue adjustments. One of your questions was, is there a way to reduce that or mitigate that even further? And Mark will go into some of the things that we looked at since the last meeting that we were at. But this is the other, this is the other side that you also need to fund. Remember, I'll go back one slide. This is just operating. And then now we also have to address capital expense. So that's why you want to see your revenues above, you want to see red bars, so then you know you have revenues above your operating expense. That goes into funding this capital expense, which averages around 1.5 to 1.6 million dollars a year. And this is just your typical repair replacement. This isn't for expansion, anything of that sort related to growth. That is separate, and that'll be captured in the capacity fees, which I'll give a summary of that as a starting point for tonight. And then this is how that additional revenue of those eight percents and six percents translate to funding your reserves. Last time, what we showed was just a total dollar amount of reserves, and this time around, what we showed, what we're showing is what makes up those reserves in terms of the components of reserves you have in your reserve policies. So some of the examples are, you have operating reserve, you have a debt service reserve for your loans, you have a rate stabilization reserve, you have a capital reserve, and those collectively make up your total reserves. And you also have an emergency reserve as well. And all this is in your reserve policies with the targets. And we modeled that, which was something that was a separate council meeting previous to our meeting July 18th, that you've had workshops on. And then from there, our proposed rates, what we showed was on monthly fixed charge, we showed the existing charge of today. And then we also show kind of like a intermediate step of what would be your existing charge with the SRF loan two, because if you did nothing, and you, say you decided to reject our proposed recommendations, you still have an obligation that you don't have funding for. So that's why I wanted to show this intermediate step of just tacking on the SRF number two loan to your existing rates. So then what is the incremental difference between, between that baseline, that new baseline with SRF, SRF loan number two and our proposed recommendations? It's a difference of just under $2. Okay, and that already, that 64.92 incorporates the eight percent revenue adjustment. And then we're also showing variable rates for your commercial. And we do, and it's common to have more variable rates for commercial, because they have different loading characteristics and strength concentrations of the flow that contributes to the treatment plant that you're treating. So again, SRF loan number two is, the obligation requires the rates to increase on average by $15.25. And then the additional amount related to the eight percent revenue adjustment above total revenues is $1.30, and that's pretty much for your operating cost. Now, one thing that we wanted to do was kind of give you a baseline of where we were, what we discussed. And then there's multiple comments that we took down, and, and we're going to address those comments in this next section of the presentation. And Mark's going to lead that discussion, and I'm available to answer any more detailed questions with that.
We, after reviewing the last session, we found that there were approximately eight combinations of questions, concerns, comments that came to us. And in the staff report in here, I just kind of summarized what they were. The first two, on revisiting the utility reserve policy and reduce the first year revenue, the revenue increase from, you know, reduce it from eight to six. We're going to talk about those together, and even though Mr. Isaac thinks he's out of this really quick, he's going to be right back up here to talk about those two items. Then we're going to individually talk about the researching the historic data on SRF one and the feasibility of individuals to, to pay off their SRF loans early. Also going to talk separately about the senior living option and our findings on that. And then the, the last three bullets are really connected with the capacity fee section, that we're going to give a, a highlight on that, and how that's developed, and what you can utilize on each of those methodologies, and what you can use those funds for. So getting into the first one on revisiting the reserves and reducing the revenue, the results and impact on the utility. Mr. Isaac, go from here.
As I mentioned, I said we're going to tag team on this presentation. So with looking at reducing that first year's percentage to kind of level out and see how that impacts the rest, one thing that we didn't want to do is reduce it to six, and then the next you know, you see the eight in a different year. That wasn't the intent. So then, so what we wanted to do was look at rate stabilization reserve, use it to mitigate rates, and initially don't fund it. Now, if we want to mitigate rates, we want to use those funds, so it doesn't make sense to fund it and use it at the same time. And the capital reserve, we leverage to cover a portion of necessary capital. So it's okay, basically what that means is, if your capital reserve goes down, that's okay, you're using it just for liquid cash available to offset any spikes in expenses, knowing that over time it's going to rebuild when the capital expense goes down in a certain year. When we do that, and we use that, that flexibility to do so, we could reduce the revenue adjustment in the first year to 5.5% and all future years to 5.5. So then it's very leveled revenue adjustments every single year. And what does that mean? It means your reserves don't meet your target until 2027. But one thing I mentioned last time was that with sewer is very different than water. Sewer is very, very stable revenue stream. Your residential, all your residential units are a flat charge, so that revenue's coming in. It doesn't fluctuate based on the amount of water that's used. So it's very steady, and around 95% of all your revenue, ninety, just over 90%, I would say, is that fixed revenue coming from residential customers. So knowing that you're not meeting your target to 2027, I'm not too concerned compared to if it was water, which could be very volatile based on people cutting back substantially on their water use.
When you say meet targets, which targets are you, are you referring to?
Your, the reserve targets.
Reserve policy.
Yeah, the reserve policy targets, correct.
Okay.
And the new target does not, also the new target does not include the rate stabilization reserve. So the, the concept there again is, if we're going to use it to mitigate rates, then just don't fund it now until you have available funds later on. Okay?
Is that it on the reserves, or were you?
That's it on the, on the reserves, or the things that we change
Okay.
to meet that lower reduction in the first year.
I guess, when, I guess when we were discussing that at the, at the meeting, I, I had looked at it a little differently. I went back and looked at all of the, the different reserves that we have in place, and my idea was that we would look at actually making changes to the policy. In, in, for example, we're looking at the operating, the operating reserve, I believe it's, it shows 120 days. Right now, that equals about 1.3 million dollars. Well, if we looked at each one of the reserves and reduced what the reserve policy said, as long as it was still reasonable, wouldn't that have the effect of reducing the rate itself if we are not generating that sustained reserve?
Yes, overall, that then reduces your reserve target, then we're not, we're going to be solving for a lower target than what we are today.
Right.
That is correct. The rule of thumb is, if you're monthly to bi-monthly, you want to have at least 90 to 120 days of, of operating, of reserves for operating that's related to your operating expenses, so you have liquid cash on hand for your day-to-day operations.
Right. In looking at our reserve policy right now for the operating, it's 120 days. So if we went to 90 days, we would drop that reserve from approximately 1.3 million to maybe a million dollar reserve.
If you, that's something that's, because it's policy, that's
Right.
more, something that's a separate item that would be discussion with the council and staff
Counsel.
of the direction that's separate for myself. But yes, you are correct. If you went to 90, then you're, then you're looking at bare bones
Right.
for operating with, with making sure it covers your monthly and bi-monthly expenses.
I guess then maybe I'm speaking more to council. You know, I went through and looked at the various reserves, and, and I would like to throw out some numbers and get, you know, feedback from, from obviously staff. But when I looked at some of these numbers, knowing what the reserves, because we have five different reserves to, to use, with the exception of the debt service reserve, which is a minimum of, I think, about 2.7 millions we have to have on hand. But in looking at like the operating reserve, that's about 1.3 million, or that's what I was told. If we drop that to a million dollars, we pick up $300,000 there. And that still is approximately a 90-day reserve period. The debt service, again, I don't think we should do anything with that, because it's mandated by the bond covenants. Under the system improvements, capital, this is, this is one, I mean, we've got about 1.7 million dollars in there, I think annually, at least that's the numbers that I was given. I don't know that we need 1.7 million dollars, and I would look to staff to provide a justification of that for, you know, 1.7 every single year to maintain that. I, I, you know, if we were to drop that to, say, a million dollars, and I'm just throwing out examples, we're now looking at about a million dollars less. The rate stabilization, I don't know that, after listening to, to the consultant, I think maybe, maybe we could get rid of that entire amount, at least for a short period of time, or maybe half of it. So then you're at about 1.25 million. The emergency capital, you know, we've got 1.5 million dollars in there. So that, but there's nothing that prevents us from using the emergency capital to go into emergency operating reserves if that were the case as well. I mean, these are all reserves set aside for specific purposes, but if something did come up, I think we still have the ability to use these funds, as long as they're used for the intended purpose, which is the wastewater treatment plant. So i- if you were to drop that to a million dollars, we're looking at anywhere from 1.5 to 2 million dollars less if we simply reserve or reduce the requirement that we self-imposed on ourselves for the reserve. My question would be, is to, you know, come to hopefully some agreement with council on what a revised reserve policy would be, ask staff to then reevaluate what this does in terms of the rate structure, and then come back to us. And I apologize, I didn't get a chance to talk to staff about this. I've been in jury duty and was ill for several days, so I had, didn't get a chance to go over this with staff. So this is all new to them, and I apologize for that.
I would like to just make one comment, just in some analysis we did do. So we did look at, let's reduce the capital improvement reserve. Let me give a summary of what the purposes of some of these reserves are. Let me give a summary of what the purposes of some of these reserves are based on my experience, not specific to GALL, but just overall industry standards. You know, the capital reserve, the goal there is you don't want to have a project, a big capital project stop because you need to wait for billings to come in or stop or not start because you can't award the contract because you don't have funds available. Another thing is, you ever want to go out for grant funding, you could also use that to show matching funds. So the rule of thumb is that you want to have at least a year's worth of capital and it's mainly just so the, that year, you don't have to worry about when revenues are coming in. You have the revenue in hand to complete that full schedule without any hiccups. So that's why, that's what the basis on of why it's that dollar amount, based on your average capital. Your mercy reserve is based on your assets. So just like thinking about reinvesting in your home, you want two percent reinvestment in your home, you want something similar to your assets. Another example would be, you don't want it to be arbitrary, so assets good, or you want to look at what's your highest risk of your, of your improvements, of your, of your system and how much would it cost to repair that? And the, there's some things, there's, there's known risk and there's unknown risk. The purpose of the emergency fund is when you don't know what risk you have that then occurs. So you do have funds that you could pull. When we reduced the capital fund down, I think we reduced it down in increments, we then found that what's happening is the other reserves are then being used as the cash flow that's needed for the capital improvements. So then when that happens, what, what's occurring is now those other reserves aren't being used for the, for the purpose they were established for. They're now technically being used for the capital reserve, even though they're being called something else. You'll still be fine in terms of your, your funds overall and you're, and you're going to have positive income in your reserves, but you're not going to be using your emergency reserve for emergencies. You're not going to be using your operating for that, for operating expenses. That's all being used to offset the capital expense that's happening. So I don't know if that was the, that's the intent. Because once you do that, then you might as well just call those other reserves capital reserves. So I just want to give you an understanding of the way we look at it from an industry standpoint. But definitely this is a policy decision on, on how you guide, which would then, we'll take that information and, and then remodel the analysis.
So it would kind of basically be robbing from Peter to pay for Paul?
To, to a certain extent, yeah. It's using a reserve that's called something for something else. Correct.
And I guess part of my, you know, thought process involved, here we've got a, a brand new treatment plant. We have a new conveyance system, at least for the, for the majority of the city, a live oak, the whole new lift station. And I know that there are other pump stations and things that, you know, can go wrong and do go wrong. At the same time, I'm trying to think of, I know we don't want to extend the, the debt service like it indicated, you know, it'd be about one point six million dollars in 2027 if we go from the eight percent to the six percent. But what I'm trying to do in the first year, so what I'm trying to do is look at, okay, what in terms of the reserve policy, which we do control, would have the effect of, of having a positive effect reduction wise in the overall rate? I, I don't know that it's up to, I don't know that it's smart or advisable for the council to determine, you know, what these reserves should be in each one, but, but I think it's completely permissible for the council to say, we would like to see of these five or four, because the debt service one cannot be touched, we'd like to see one point five million dollars reduced. So that would be available for rates.
Didn't we just have a whole reserve meeting a while back on why we were doing the numbers we were doing?
Yes, we did.
Okay, just asking.
Yeah, although I don't recall any compelling reason other than industry standards as to why we are where we are.
I would like to make a comment on the reserves. We are using the capacity reserves. We didn't, you know, that's the nine hundred thousand dollars a year and that reduces rates about one percent. Or well, about a half a percent, a little bit of a half a percent. So if we were going to use another million and a half, you'd see the rates come down about, about another one or one and a half percent. But looking at this, just, just looking at this chart right here, this, this has removed the rate stabilization. And as you see, just on, on going from these reserves, they keep getting smaller. You know, we're well under the target. And when you look at the target, yes, that, that is a policy issue. But let's talk about each one, operating reserves. If we were, if we build monthly, I would definitely agree to ninety days. But we're not, we're billed every other month. So to get the cash flow in and to get the stuff, that's why we looked at a hundred and twenty days. That's, that's the bottom one. The next one, we have to have SRF number one and two untouched. We can't be dipping into that at all. We're supposed to leave it alone untouched. So now you got the first three, you really can't, you know, we really need to have that cash flow, we need to have that untouched. When you look at the next one, at the capital, which is the green, that, boy, that capital starts getting smaller. We have, as, as Mr. Isaac had indicated, that we have different, different projects going on. We may have to slow things down. We may even have to go out and get a short-term loan to pay for those projects. Though we do have a new plant, we have a lot of new things that are out there. We have an average of a little over a million dollars a year, a million and a half dollars a year of projects that are, that are estimated over the next five years. That includes permitting needs, it includes different things that are going on at the plant and things that are required by our permit. Then we get into the emergency fund.
But permits, permits wouldn't necessarily fall under capital improvement, would they?
Well, that's where we've put it at this time because it's such a large amount. We, we expended about seven hundred thousand dollars for our last permit, just for the permit process. And that's where we put it as estimated at this time, you know, in, in the capital. If we pull that out, we would still have to, to generate revenue to pay for that.
I understand.
Yeah, so it, it doesn't matter where we put it. But we did at this time put it in CIP because we think this next permit is going to be close to a million dollars cost because of so, so much more additional information they're requiring and such. So now, now we're dealing with just that emergency fund. So, so again, it's policy, how small you want to make that emergency fund. And when that emergency fund is gone, we're going into the capital because we can't go into the others, you know? And if we do, we're, especially the two, we're in violation of our, of our loan agreement that we've signed. So, so we can cut it, but if, again, if you cut it a million and a half dollars, it's, it's only going to affect about one and one and a half percent of our rates.
I guess is, my question is, is if we did do that, I, I mean, you're, would you still be able to carry out your capital improvement plan? I guess.
If we remove the emergency reserve?
No, no. Assuming you reduced, I mean, you have one point seven million dollars every year or one point seven million dollars for the capital improvements. Is that based on your, your annual, based on your annual expenditure currently?
That's, that's correct. It's a cash in, cash, cash out.
Cash in, cash out.
So it's not, it's not one point seven million every year, it's just maintaining one point seven million so you could use it during the year while revenues come in that year to replace it.
Okay. So we're assuming we're going to spend at least one point seven and climbing in future years?
Yes. One thing I forgot to mention was, I said we did some, you know, analysis of the capital. So we, if we got rid of the capital target, it was around one point six million, then the revenue adjustments go from five point five percent to five percent across the board.
Could you repeat that again?
Sure. If we get rid of the capital reserve target and say we made it zero, I mean, you still have the funds in there and it's going to, the capital is going to be using those funds over time, but it's not refilling that capital reserve. Then the, what the, the benefit you get from that is you get to reduce your revenue adjustments from five point five percent to five percent each year. So you, you gain a half a percent each year of reduction. So from that standpoint, that's why we looked at it and that's why we were not presenting that one. We're just presenting getting rid of the rate stabilization reserve because it seemed like the, the, the cost benefit analysis wasn't, wasn't positive enough to move in that direction.
If I could add, council member, you're absolutely correct. It's a policy decision and it really comes down basically to a risk decision. How much risk are we willing to take that we might have to do, you know, some emergency rate actions in response to, you know, a, an economic dip or a loss of a system conflict that's unexpected or an earthquake that damages a large portion of our system? So reserves are a way to have a rainy day fund for the unexpected. And, and we were operating without a real reserve target up until earlier this year, this past year. And if council so wishes, we can revise those policy targets. You, you set them, you can change them. What we've recommended is what we think is a, a fairly middle-of-the-road conservative from a risk standpoint. If we, for, for, in the interests of sort of doing everything we can to mitigate potential impacts to our ratepayers in the short run, we're willing to take more risk, we can do that. And if, if the odds are, you know, if, if, if odds favor us, that, that's a good decision. If, if we have some unexpected true fiscal emergencies or physical emergencies, we may look back and, and question the wisdom of those decisions. So we would look for guidance from council on, you know, how much safety factor, risk factor do you want to build in to achieve maybe an additional half a percent or a percent?
Well, I'm not inclined to change anything. I'm just going to say that upfront because we've already gone through it and done it. And, you know, even living at home, you want to know you got some spare change in case something happens. That's just my two cents worth.
Well, if, if the rest of council isn't interested in this, then I'll, I'll drop it at this point. I mean, I'm not going to, you know, beat on a dead horse. I mean, there's no sense in it. I mean, to me, it made sense to take a look at it, but if council doesn't want to, then let's move on.
And maybe just one more, as you're pondering that, one more, I don't want to jump ahead of the presentation, but when we bring this back in terms of sort of a, a recommendation on, on the rates themselves, we are suggesting, and in our staff report, we spent some time talking about, that those be established under Prop 218 as rate caps and that we would annually, with the budget process, look at the subsequent year based on prior years and if growth exceeds expectations and if costs are coming in below the targets and we haven't had any emergencies, you know, we might be willing and able to recommend that council waive some or all of that next year's five percent, five and a half percent wherever we end up.
So this slide that's up here right now, it's showing what the reserves would look like with a five point five as the cap?
Five point five and with the rate civilization fund being used.
So what you're proposing then is that this first year, instead of being eight percent, would be five point five for this first eighteen months, because it's about eighteen months, right?
That's correct, yes.
And then the cap for the?
Future years.
For the future years would be a cap of five point five?
That's correct.
Hopefully with some?
Yes.
Hopefully we'd be able to adjust that yearly. Okay. Yeah, I'm not really comfortable with reducing the reserves. We're already dropping them way down and even with this, you know, my concern was just that I thought eight percent was a big hit to begin with. So if we can bring that down, I feel better about it. And, you know, the reserves to this, the CIP reserves, I mean, they drop, you know, in twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four, I mean, they're getting pretty low then. So, I mean, I understand what council member Campion is, is saying and, but I do, I, I feel more comfortable knowing that we have a hundred and twenty day reserve than a ninety day reserve, mainly, as you said, we do, you know, we bill every two months.
Two months, right.
Ninety days doesn't, if we had an emergency, man-made or, or nature or, you know, I'm not comfortable with it, I don't think at this time.
Well, and as you, as, you know, we need a starting point and as you said, we can always revisit. You know, if something happens, we get a big increase somewhere, wouldn't that be wonderful? And then we can revisit it. And we'd, that'd make everybody happy.
But I do like that we're bringing it down from the eight to five point five because I thought the eight was a pretty big hit. And I, and that we just need to make sure that people understand that we'll review it yearly and it's not necessarily it's going to be a five point five. But the state required the upgrades, that was, you know, that was made a number of years ago, the decision to, to do it. I mean, didn't have much choice not to. And we have to pay back now what it costs to do it.
And that it wasn't in our hands, like you said, it was in the hands of the state.
And so just to summarize, this, this still has the hundred and twenty days, this still has the target of your, your debt service requirements. It does have the target of the annual average expenses of capital, which is around one point six million, and then the emergency. You know, you do see your capital go down, but then you also see it start to build up and that's because revenues are starting to catch up to then get back to where you should be. We are going to, I, I do have the, what the rates are based on this scenario. And keep in mind that those five percent, as I mentioned the last time, is, is a bum beyond the, the fifteen dollars for that SRF loan number two. That, by itself is like a thirty percent increase. And this is just how much more you need for your ongoing operations, your reserves, your capital. So imagine you didn't need a loan. You're, you're, you have your ship in good order, you need five percent revenue adjustments.
And the loan won't be taking that, won't be adjusted, right? The loan payment, when we do a five percent increase, it's on the rates, it's not on the loan payment, correct?
Well, the, the five percent is, is, the five percent is total revenue. And then the total revenue then converts into what the rates are. You'll see the, the loan stay the same, but then the, the other components are going to make up the difference of that five percent total revenue need.
And maybe to clarify, I think your question may be going to, if in future years we readopt a indexed increase, that we wouldn't be increasing the amount that's debt service, that it would be increased if it was, for instance, a CPI-type index. This is actually moving away from that in the five, five years, that it would be set at a cap of, if adopted, five and a half percent under our new recommendations. There would not be any other adjustment added to that. So the, the debt service would stay fixed, but our total revenue would need to grow by five and a half percent to recover in a ten-year horizon.
So that, just to make sure we understand what I'm saying, so SRF one and SRF two, those loan payments remain the same, they're not getting hit with the increase, right?
They're not being adjusted annually.
Yes.
Right, but, so the, the fixed, the fixed component and the flow component, those are making up the difference. So if you look at the, just the total dollar amount, the total dollar amount's going up by five point five percent, but the way you, you really have to look at is, next year we need another five point five percent more in revenue. And we take that total revenue and we go through the same analysis and then it sets the rates. And then, but we're keeping the loans fixed. So that additional incremental amount of revenue need is being put on the fixed component and it's getting put on the, the flow component. So if you compare those two to the previous year, it's going to be more than five point five percent because there is taking the total load because those loans are staying fixed.
But if we had an increase in revenue due to increase in housing, I mean, it would probably be increasing connections.
Bring it down.
And we would bring down that five point five.
Yes.
Bring that down, okay.
With that, here are the rates with the five point five revenue adjustments in fiscal year, the first fiscal year that we're in right now, it would be sixty-three thirty-nine, which is actually slightly less than where we are today. I forgot what the dollar amount was of today, it was like sixty-four, I believe. So it definitely mitigates what the increase needs to be. Granted, what I'm talking about is not the rate of today without the loan, it's the rate of today with the, with the SRF loan number two, because I view that as, that is the new baseline. And then the variable rates to your non-residential also reduce slightly as well. And what, through the five-year period, you get up to the seventy-eight dollars in that final year? And what, through the five-year period, you get up to the $78 in that final year? And then...
Next couple I'll take. I'll take the fun ones. So we were asked...
Did you bring chocolate or anything?
Yeah.
Really? Okay, just asking.
The, we were asked to look at the, research some data on the SRF number one and stuff, so staff went ahead and looked at it, and, you know, it is a, it is a lot of things that we would have to go into and analyze it. But overall, we don't know if it would justify any, any of our staff time doing this. We have been audited, we do have a payment schedule, we know what's owed, remaining to be owed. This rate, the new rates that we're proposing, does adjust downward because we have more people paying into it, so it, it takes it down, I think, another 75 cents down from what is being paid today on SRF number one. So, you know, we've got good records of what the state requires us to do, and we just don't see that there's any, you know, anything necessary. We could do it, if we're directed to do it, but it's just, we don't see that there's any value into that. It's not going to change our rates, it's not going, you know, change the SRF loan, at all, number one loan at all. We have our payment schedule, so.
So what, what exactly were you looking for as part of that analysis?
It was, it was just asked in the council meeting about reviewing the SRF number one, look at the data and stuff, and, and it was just a general comment that was stated. What, what we did is, as I showed you the eight comments, whenever council had asked us to look at something, we went ahead and did it. And in the staff report, I give the exact wording that are really close to the exact wording that we received from the, from the video that we reviewed. And, and so when you look at, I, I think it had to do with, what did we collect every year, what did we pay out every year, and it, it just, you know, this has all been underway now for about six years, but we've been collecting the rate, we started collecting it before that, to get a reserve up, so we could start making these big chunk payments of little over $1 million, close to $1.5 million a year payment. So we just didn't see a benefit at that, but we could do it if we're directed to do that.
So we're asking you to do stuff you've already done?
Uh, I, I couldn't...
But you already did this, right?
What's that?
So we're asking you, somebody asked you to do stuff that you'd already done?
No, they had asked us to look at the data from the SRF number one data.
Well, I'm sure the reason Mr. Walters would like to speak on this is, this is actually, this came from, from the public.
Oh, okay.
And so he'd said, I would like to see an analysis of how it was collected, when it was collected, what it was spent for, and we're recommending that that would be probably a misuse of our current staff time, given that we are where we are, and it's all been audited.
We haven't opened a public comment yet.
Go, go one slide up.
Well, we'll, we'll wait till we're done, unless, on this, is it...
This is a perfect time to talk about it.
All right.
If you don't mind.
Counsel?
All right.
Come on down. One question, that's all you get.
The, the reason why I brought this up is, I have information from the city on the cost for the wastewater treatment upgrade from 2004 to 2011. This is from the city. This is $23.3 million. That's what we're paying back now, that $11. Then you go further, this is from the city also, and this comes out, money that we paid in for those six years prior to 2011, when this started, that money comes down to a total of $11,258,000. This is extra money. Where did, where did this go? It went into the reserves that you have right now. So those reserves should pay down that SRF 1 loan, or a partial part of it, it should be maybe five years' payment. We're not getting credit for this. We're paying 20 years for this. This is extra. If you add these two together, they're $33 million, or $35 million for SRF 1. What's going on? And they say they don't want to talk about it, it's too much staff time. Here's two pieces of paper that'll help you out.
So the question, the way I understand it is, Mr. Walters believes that the reserves, there should be, monies available. Is it difficult, and I think it's a legitimate question, you know, how were the money spent? And, and I don't know that that, is it that difficult to, to demonstrate what happened in that, in that period of time?
I would have to defer to the finance director at this time.
Thank you, Mark.
Haven't we asked you this question a million times, too? I'm, I'm sorry, but is, has, has this come up before? Was there an answer?
Specific to this question?
Right.
I'm not aware of it. Did it come up before I arrived here, Mr. Winkler, do you know?
Well, so it's real easy to stand up and wave papers and say, clearly, this doesn't add up. Well, I don't know what papers he's looking at, you know, and where they were in the process. We are starting with a $9 million fund balance, and, and that gets us out of the 10-year horizon that Mr. Abbe had up on a previous slide. So yes, there is $9 million of accumulated reserves, a large portion of which were reimbursement of sunk costs that were previously paid out of prior reserves to get us that starting fund balance. Those are getting tacked on to loan two, to, to maintain the cash flow that got us to this point. So I would just suggest that the numbers that are being alluded to are fictitious numbers, and no, we're not double-charging for SRF 1. The money all stays in the, in the enterprise fund for the sewer enterprise, and if that was true, we'd have a reserve balance of, I don't know, $26 million. We didn't, you know, there were no moving the monies off in the middle of the night to a different fund. There's been historic questions about the cost allocation plan. The city recently adopted and revised the allocation plan that going forward, I think, will, will happen to be more beneficial to the, to the wastewater fund. But what was done historically is, you know, we're, those are prior-year audited financials that were based on the approved plan at the time, and, you know, we can, we can do forensic accounting all we want, it's not going to change the, the numbers at the end of the day.
Okay, anything you want to add?
Well, Mr. Winkler, what was explained to me at one point when I questioned this before, when those issues were brought up before, is that part of the rate increase in 2004 was to build a reserve, correct? Was, part of it was that we didn't have the reserves necessary for the SRFs 1 and 2 at that time? I mean, was, I mean, that was my understanding, that that, part of that was to build a reserve, and, I mean, I, I absolutely think that we needed to do that. I mean, that those, those weren't just built up to spend on the loan, those were actually built up because we were, had state mandate to have a reserve for that loan, correct?
Well, that's my general understanding. I've been here since 2012, so that precedes me by nearly a decade, but...
Well, that was just my understanding, when it was kind of explained to me.
That is my understanding also.
Was the reason that, and, and at the time, in 2004, my understanding was, when they were making that rate increase at that time, was that we had to have a reserve, or we have that state mandated reserve that we have to keep for the loans, correct?
Correct. Could I just interject a little bit here? I just did some off-the-napkin calculations. If you look at 12 years, a little over 12 years of collecting that $11 a month, that comes out to a little over $9 million that we've collected. We have spent well over $8 million in, in fee, in payments alone.
Loan payments.
And we also have to have about $1.5 million in reserves.
Right, so there it is.
So we're right there, I mean, just doing off-the-napkin. We go in and we look at every account for every month, and we go through that, that whole calculation, you know, you're talking 12 years of 6,500 to 7,000 accounts, you know, you know, each month. It's a lot of time, but my numbers just giving you right there are really close to what we've collected and what we've expended. It's, every year, we show what we've expended, and, and we're well within that range of what we've collected at this time.
Okay.
My understanding is also, in the year prior to my arriving, that we did a rate reduction, and, so I don't know the numbers that are being presented, you know, if they were the original numbers, we've lowered that.
Yeah, okay. Moving on, we did look at individuals, you know, it was commented about individuals paying off their portion of the SRF loan early, and it is feasible, and it is, it's a little bit of staff time, and if we do that, we do talk about in the staff report that if somebody came in and paid off SRF number one right now, today, they'd save about $200, or $2.50 a month. They came in and paid off SRF 2, it's about the same amount, right in there, $2.60 or so. And so it can be done, we have to change some stuff in our computer system and add a few things, but it is possible to do that, to, to have somebody come in and determine what their portion of the remaining payment is, and...
Do you got an off, what, how much it would be like, when you're going to come in, with two grand down, or how, how does that work?
Well, and also in the staff report, don't you talk about the amount of staff time that it would take to do that on an individual basis?
Yeah, we've talked with, with finance staff and estimate that the couple of hours of time that would be necessary, that we would recommend that we would approve if, if you, council wants to make that option available, a $50 application fee...
One-time fee.
To cover the staff time, and then the payoff today would be about $1,340 for SRF 1, to save $2.62 a month. The proposed payoff amount, under the proposed rates today, would be about a little over $3,000 on SRF 2, to save again about $2.62 a month for the duration of the remaining loans.
I may be wrong, but I don't see a lot of people doing that, but maybe you should have a timeline with when, if you're going to come down and pay off the money, you need to do it by a certain time, instead of...
If, if we make it available, they can do it at any time. These numbers will change with time.
Yeah. But I do agree, there needs to be a one-time fee to, because I don't think other ratepayers should be paying for some, that, something that, A, one or two individuals, or even if it's a 50 individuals in the community chose to do it, I think that there needs the cost of staff time...
Right.
To go in and do that for this one individual that doesn't benefit the ratepayers across the board, needs to, that our costs need to be covered in that case. I mean, if, if we do offer that option, I don't think it should, it should be cost-neutral to the rest of the ratepayers, that we're not paying for that.
I think we would, we would definitely bring back a policy or, or, you know, a direction on that from you, and, and we would include all of our costs involved in it and, and that effect, so. Can I move on?
Yes, you can.
Please.
Still no chocolate, huh?
Not yet. Not yet, but it's been ordered.
Okay.
I don't know if they can get in the front door. Yeah, the officer's in here, he's not going to stop him. Okay, you gotta get restationed out there. So, the senior live-in option. What we did, it was pretty easy to calculate what each customer, 100 customers would impact the, you know, the whole rates and everything, that was easy. But what we found out when we went and we, we started getting together what our policies would be in, in direction, how other entities do it, as we started gathering the information, we found out we don't have enough information to meet the nexus that's required in the Prop 218. We're not there yet. We just started our meters last year, you know, the water meters, we need to have that data in there. We only have one winter, set of winter months, we are not even through the summer, so we don't even know what the usage is there. So before we can do anything here, we're just recommending that we need to pull that back at this time, because we're not going to be able to, to, to really have a, a good, a, a good support of that information.
Yeah, you don't have enough.
Because it's such piecemeal right now that we have.
You don't have enough.
It's such limited. Yeah, and, and we need to be able to, to be able to support our, our stuff at this time. So that was, you know, so that's one good thing, and also a bad thing that came out of the last meeting, is, as we got more into developing a policy, we found out we didn't have enough information yet to...
Are you still recommending that do a senior rate on age-restricted units?
No, not, none of it at this time, because we...
You're just actually recommending not to have a senior category at this time?
Well, I would suggest that our, in consulting with the city attorney, there were going to be some concerns if you do an age-restricted, and I'll let her elaborate further.
Well, I know we've had problem, we've had issues before about one class of customers being charged less than other classes than having to cover the cost of it, and that that not being...
We have to have the data, and we have to have it defensible, and we're not there at this point, basically.
Yes, and under Prop 218, you can obviously charge rates by different classes and their usage, but not on the age would be a different item. So you could certainly set up, if there was an issue with folks that were having trouble paying their bills, then you could look into setting up like a low-income rate like PG&E does, but that would, under Prop 218, you can't use that, pay that out of the water rates, you'd have to use general fund money. So it'd have to be a whole separate program that we'd need to look into for that. So this, it started as just looking at the lower use that might be used if you had a restricted unit that only had two people, but we don't have enough data, that's was part of the determination, since this is really more of a, how many people are actually living in the unit.
When would you have the data?
I would think, I would think in about 18 months, because that would give us three winters and three summers of data.
We could have it come back in 18 months, then? I mean, I'd like to see it come back, so if the data's available, I'd like to see it.
So what, when we evaluate in the budget year for, what would that be, 2019?
2019 or 2020.
No, I mean, because we're going to look at the rate every year at the budget cycle.
No, but what he's saying is, for the, for purposes of the analysis, he won't have the data to, to analyze based on a, I guess it'd be a per-person occupancy rather than the age-restricted. So it would be based on, you know, you'd have to have, you'd have to have some, some baseline data, wouldn't you?
Yeah, and one of the ways that you could do it, and, and we just didn't have the data for it, is to give a variable rate, you know, based on the winter use, not, not on how many people are in the home, but what that home is using, what the residential, resident is using during the winter months, and then calculate that on an annual basis and have a flat rate for the whole year. And so every year, you would recalculate. There's different ways of doing it, but right now, we just don't have the data, you know, but about 18 months. I, I think we just couldn't bring it back, but we'd have to do a mini-rate study on, because we'd have to look at the, because if you're changing the classes, you're adding a new class and impact, so we'd have to look at that at this time, because we don't have that class, so we'd have to do another rate study, but not as full as we've done here. But definitely about a year and a half, we'll have the data.
Wouldn't that be about the budget cycle about 2019?
Yeah.
Does council want to have that come back?
I would. I would, I'd want to look at it then, once we have some more data.
So perhaps we could, once we develop that data, we could bring back some preliminary analysis and the ramifications. You do have to do the whole Prop 218 thing all over again, if you go to adjust it, and we'd be happy to bring back further recommendations in a couple of years when that data's available, and then we could make an informed decision at that time as to, you know, what the numbers are trending to, as to what, what that would look like.
Okay.
So, did I just hear, I understand you say it would require a whole nother...
If we're going to establish a new rate class...
Oh, okay.
And then equity between the classes, we have to sort of open the can up all over again.
We could look at, at that time, whether or not that's something we want to do.
But if we lower certain rates, it's going to raise other rates.
Yeah, well...
All, all other things being equal.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Next?
And I'm just saying, trying to think ahead, if you established a, well, I guess it wouldn't, it wouldn't, you wouldn't have justification, you couldn't justify establishing a rate class and not have a rate on it at this point, in order to avoid a 2.18 process, you'd have to have a rate.
Right, to withstand a legal challenge, we'd have to have a detailed nexus or basis for that rate.
It'll, it will be similar, similar, once we come back with something with the data. See, something similar to the water is that there's going to be, some people are going to be paying higher than the, if, if the rate right now, we'll just say the residential rate, as we're proposing, is around a little over $63, but you're going to find, as we review the data, there'll be some people paying higher than that, and some people paying lower than that. So when you're going higher than the rate, you have to do the Prop 218, you know, than the established rate, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Let me ask a question. If, if you establish a new class... Let me ask a question. If, if you establish a new class and it's a lower rate, or if it's a new class, it's a new rate, period. You'd have to do 218, is that correct?
Yes, because I think as Mr. Clarkson was saying, that's going to impact the other rates because it's all based on your cost of service, so then you'd be looking at how you have to allocate those costs amongst your customer classes, which will likely impact the other rates. So, you know, you can adjust your rates under the, if you were to adopt the five-year schedule that's been proposed, that you can reduce downwards without having to do Prop 218 again because you're not increasing the rates. But assuming you change your customer classes, that you need to do, you would need a rate study and go through the Prop 218 process because it's, it's going to be adding a new rate and change, likely changing the other rate classes.
What was going through my mind was if the other assumptions with regard to growth are exceeded, then you would have the ability to stabilize or reduce the other rates, assuming sufficient revenue came in on that side based on the new class. You would just be establishing a new class and you wouldn't necessarily have to address the existing population because possibly that would be under the cap rate.
It's potential.
Yeah.
Well, we'll, we'll get your answer in 18 months.
18 months, thank you.
Thank you.
We're yawning, so that means the next one. Treatment buy-in. This is really a three items here, and the treatment buy-in, reimbursements, offset of future debt service. This is going to be talked about. This, this is the easiest slide for me. This is going to go to the next discussion that we're going to have on capacity fees and how each of these tie in into each methodology that we have. So we come up with staff recommendations. After looking at everything, looking at a re-evaluation based on the last council meeting or the last study session, we're proposing to eliminate the short-term rate stabilization reserve target. That's the 5.5 rate percent, rate option. Authorize an SRF, you know, a, a system for an SRF early loan payoff and defer the senior living rate implementation. And that impact, we have a new table that basically, and I've got some for the public if they're interested. That's for the diast. Yes. And what that shows is about a 3.50 reduction from our previous, 3.50 a month reduction from our previous July 18th. So that, that incorporates all, you know, the things that we talked about tonight as far as deferring the, the senior living, reducing the rate stabilization to zero and impacting our capital reserve funds. So it's about a $3.50 cent per month reduction from the July 18th proposal that you saw. So we're here for any, any other questions or comments you may have.
I think it speaks for itself.
Are you ready for capacity fees?
We're ready.
Maybe just a quick summarization. So we're going to, at this time, proceed with the proposed reserves and reducing to five and a half percent for the first five years and those would be rate caps that we've committed to you. We'll bring back as part of an annual budget process to look at the subsequent year. And then I believe we owe you some further recommendations and a couple of years out relative to possible establishment of a low census. We'll use that instead of age-related since we can't use that as a nexus. Lower usage is probably a better way to look at it.
And that's how, that's how it's now.
So this next portion is sort of new ground, looking at the capacity fee side, which is more of a developer connection fee.
New topic, new enthusiasm. Ready to get going? So we were hired to do a comprehensive rate study as well as look at capacity fees, which is basically the other side of the coin of making sure that new development pays their fair share of costs or the demand that they place on the system. And so another way to think about it is growth pays for growth. We have to expand. It's their, it's their dime and it shouldn't be the burden of existing rate payers.
Well, that did bring a little enthusiasm.
Yeah, there you go. So a lot of times they're called connection fees, capacity charges. It's similar, it's, it's not governed under Prop 218. It has its own statutes under the government code, but it has the same type of nexus, which is the, the charges have to be based on their reasonable costs to serve those customers. And what primarily drives this is your master plan. What's the master plan? What's the build-out scenario? And what are the improvements you need to, to have to accommodate that growth? So some of the methodologies, there's, there's a few. There's a system buy-in. There's an incremental cost method and a hybrid. So I can go over what those main two are. For the buy-in component, that approach rests on the premise that new customers are entitled to the service that exists today at the same standard. So think of, think about it that way. One thing, the one, one reason why agencies would use this would be one that the system is primarily already built out and there's not really any more facilities to build, but there's still some growth occurring, so then they buy into the system. Another example would be that some smaller agencies don't have a very sound outlook of their planning horizon, of their build-out scenario and the capital improvements. So then they rely on their existing assets and the existing customers that are connected to come up with a proxy of what's the, what's the level of service that we're providing our customers today and let's charge that same amount to make sure we can continue that same level of service. Okay? And then also another example would be if you look at the buy-in and find that the buy-in component is sufficient to cover your future capital cost. Then it's a nice nexus, say, look, we're relying on our existing assets. This is a catalog of information we know and our projections look like, basing it off of that, we should be fine in covering the future capital expenses. System buy-in is very, very one-to-one. You have your capital plan. You know the improvements that need to be constructed and then you have your projection of the amount of development that's coming online. So then you're basically taking that total incremental cost of that capital plan for growth and spreading it over just the incremental new units that are coming. Okay, so with that, a lot of times what occurs with this is, you know, you want to make sure your capital plan is very sound and you want to look at, you know, how much contingency is on there, you know, these reasonable costs. Are you sure about the development that's going to occur? How much of a variance could there be? And how far out are we looking? Are we looking at 20 years? Are we looking at ultimate demand? Are we looking out 50, 60 years? Sometimes that may, that would cause agencies to pull back and go back to the buy-in for now until you get more closer to your, your ultimate demand in terms of how many more years you have left. But with the buy-in, I'm sorry. Did I go back one? Incremental. But with the incremental approach, you're basically taking the total improvements divided by the total new development or the total new amount of gallons of flow that are going to be contributing to the system. And then the hybrid is a combination of the two. I do this quite a few times. A lot of times I do it when debt was used to finance in-advanced facilities to accommodate growth. Maybe there had to be some expansion of, or a sizing of pipes, things of that sort, and some of the debt was used for growth-related expenses. So in that scenario, we, buy-in is paying back any type of debt and then the incremental is used to pay for any future capital improvements. So there are times where we use a combination of both. It just depends on an agency-agency basis what makes sense. Okay? So as an example, I was saying this one, you know, you do have some available capacity in your current treatment plant. So that's something we're looking at is there should be a portion for the, the buy-in portion and then incremental. And then we'll look at, well, if we just go off buy-in, is that enough to cover your future capital costs? And another thing to point out, we are not just looking at wastewater. We're looking at all the utilities, water, wastewater, as well as stormwater. So we're updating all three. Okay? And then appropriate uses of those funds. You do have to have this a dedicated, in a dedicated account, which you do now. It can only use for future expansions. You could use it for the system replacement costs if it's associated with some of the buy-in component and then offset a portion of debt service payments. So that's something that is a candidate as well in your case because of those loans. So existing city utility capacity fees. One thing that we did for now is, because we're doing all the analysis, but we want to look at where you are in terms of your neighbors. So what we have here is a graph of your existing capacity of your water with a one-inch meter as the, as the comparison. So in Galt, you are just over $2,000 and then you'll see that there's probably only one agency lower than you, Lowdi, and then a residential, non-residential is higher. And then the other agencies are, some of them are substantially higher. One thing that's kind of unique in Lowdi is that they have different rates for residential, non-residential. That's somewhat odd when it's water because typically water is based on the size of the meter. So it shouldn't matter whether you're non-residential or residential. If you have a one-inch meter, you could put the same possible ultimate demand on the system. So it should be the same. It shouldn't be driven by a customer class. And then wastewater. Here you're just around $8,000, $9,000. And again, you'll see where you are in relation to the other agencies. Okay? So one thing I've noticed just from, from initially looking at your current capacity fees compared to the capacity fees I'm working on even currently is you're, you're definitely on the low end of the spectrum. And a lot of that could be, especially like on water, you have a lot of local supplies. You have a lot of groundwater available, so you're really just developing wells as opposed to new water resources, new water supplies or recycled water, things of that sort. And then with storm, storm drain capacity fees, you're well on the low side, especially with all the new permitting requirements. This just tells me you probably just haven't updated your stormwater fees in a very, very long time, I would imagine. That's just intuitiveness, me looking on the surface. But there's definitely a lot of new regulations when it comes to stormwater.
Now, these are all fees that you pay at your building permit?
Yes.
At building permit stage then, okay.
Essentially, they're mitigation fees. It's just that they don't fall under AB 1600, even though they follow, follow the same similar guidelines, their, their, their capacity fees. So another thing I wanted to look at was, okay, let's just look at the build-out scenario that's in your master plans of how many more units are, that are going to come online. Let's assume they pay your current fees and we have updated master plans of the total project cost. So in doing that, your capacity revenue, you see by utility is listed first, 18 million, 56 million, 8 million. And then the capital improvements that are in your master plans, total cost, 83 million, 8193. So clearly there's a funding gap. I mean, just water alone, can you imagine all the way through build-out, you're going to collect only $18 million to accommodate the rest of development? That's a, 18 million is a pretty, pretty small number. So that just kind of intuitively gives us a sense of where you are in relation to your updated master plan. And those master plan projects have just been updated recently, just a new, a fresh look of eyes on it through this process. And then what we're doing is we're coming up to see, we're looking at both approaches, buy-in as well as the incremental cost method to see which one makes the most sense and also see how much of an increase would it be with choosing one or the other? Because in either, either way, the, the numbers would be sound, we would correct the calculations, but you also have to look at how much of an increase is it going to be to, to fund that gap? And it's similar to, you know, when you look at wastewater rates, you know, the user fees, it's, you know, what's, what's going to be palatable? And, and our audience on this one isn't your, your rate payers. The audience here is the Business Industry Association, your developers, and, you know, they're, they're very knowledgeable, they're very savvy with this, which is fine, but they're going to want to see the nexus, which we expect and we expect to meet with them and go over the analysis that we come up with.
So as part of your study, you, you'll be doing, what, the buy-in costs plus the incremental costs and then do them independently as well? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, we're looking at them both, correct. And then it, does it warrant that in any one of the systems, should there be a combination of the two?
Okay, so that'll be included within the study that we ultimately receive?
What we'll do is most likely pick which one that we're going with. In the presentation purposes, it will show both, but similar to what I did in wastewater, once we show you and get feedback and direction and are what we recommend, if you concur, then that's what will be in the report. But the analysis will definitely show you both.
Okay. Thank you.
So for now, with that, in terms of the recommendations, we are looking at both, but what we're looking at now, because we're getting pretty close to the end here, it looks like we're, we're leaning more towards the buy-in approach than the incremental just in terms of how much of an impact the incremental will cause. It's a, it's a pretty hefty dollar amount and the buy-in is not to the same degree. So we'll, we're bringing that to you on the next one. We didn't want to overload you with the wastewater numbers, all the changes and then, and then bring a bunch of new numbers. That'll be the analysis and the numbers for capacity fees will be brought back to you on September 5th, just so you don't have to absorb so much in one night.
Will that include the hy, the hybrid method as well?
Well, if it does include the hybrid, the only one that may have that is going to be the wastewater because you have debt and you have some available capacity right now. So, and we'll show you why we're not doing both in, in that, in that one. Basically what, to give you a prelude, we're finding that the buy-in could cover the incremental cost anyways. So just adopt the buy-in and you'll be, you'll be fine to cover your future expansions.
Okay.
So then therefore you don't need to do both because it'll be a doubling effect. And utility capacity fees for, for system replacement costs and future expansion. And then we'll return with the fee recommendations, just like we always do with the water, wastewater. We'll give you our experience, our expertise and look for your feedback and then adjust to make sure that it reflects the city of Galt and your, your wishes. So how is that for a quick summary?
You whipped through the second part. That was pretty good.
So...
We were counting those pages.
The three bullets here are sort of where staff and the consultant, based on our, our advanced knowledge of what you'll see with, with further presentation, would be the approach. If there are major concerns with any one of these suggested directions, you know, let us know so we make sure we address that when we bring it back, realizing that you haven't seen numbers yet.
It's kind of hard to make a judgment call that way.
Understand.
Well, it's kind of hard to look in the crystal ball because we're just starting all this stuff off so we really get some of those predictions.
And we're trying not to totally glaze you over with overload here.
Okay, I think, Mr. Guthridge, you raised your hand. Did you feel out a slip? I'm kidding. Come on up.
She asked you to fill out a slip.
What kind of slip? My Guthridge General Park Company. So I presume all that is what we're talking about, these impact fees and so on, probably won't affect my little subdivision this year because it's already in place. Is that correct? Am I saying that correctly?
As long as you got all your permits.
Yeah, so these types of fees are paid at the time of permit issuance. We're probably several months away from adopting, you know, an effective date on these. So it'll kind of come down to your timing. If new fees are approved and there's an effective date within that ordinance that would do that.
So you're saying that a subdivision's been in place for two years, is still going to have to pay impact fees?
You'll have to pay the fees in effect at the time unless your conditions of approval were other than that.
Yeah, but this is brand new. How, how, how would that happen?
Well, there are fees in place today. This would be recommending changes to the fee structure. So the rates could change. They could go up, they could go down, likely going up based on some of the numbers we've seen.
Well, I don't think they've ever gone, gone down. I've been here since 1980 and this year. We started at $3,000, so, you know, don't... So back to my question though, are you saying to me again that I will, if I get a, because all our stuff is, you know, semi-custom, so it takes time to get the, get the permit out. So you're saying that I am going to have to pay additional fees on sewer, water and drainage, which I've already put in and for example, the drainage is into the... drainage, which I've already put in, and for example, the drainage is into the creek and so on, and we got our own drainage. You're saying I'm going to have to pay impact fees on that?
Not impact.
Well, we'll do whatever council policy directs, but the recommendation would be that as with any building permit you issued in the past or in the present, you would pay the fees in effect at the time of the building permit.
I think, Mike, if you look on the conditions of your tentative map's approval, you'll find a condition that says you're required to pay whatever the fees are at the time of the permit.
What I'm saying is, so that not only is the, I'm going to have to pay, but then the new homeowner's going to have to pay the additional fee also, so we're going to get hit twice. Because whatever that fee is, is going to go on to the bill to the fine homeowner, correct?
Correct.
And so then also, then he's going to be paying additional money when the monthly rate comes out for his bill for water, sewer, and drainage.
I don't think this is dealing with rates. This is just fees.
I understand this is not dealing with rates. I'm saying, at some point, he will.
So the connection fees are one-time, at the time of building permit, and typically, the builder will put that into the price of the home, and that, those fees only get paid once.
Right.
Now, the operating and maintenance assessments would go on to maintain whatever improvements were put in.
But aren't I paying that right now? I've already paid that in my Melrose and so on for the last 15, 20 years while that land's been sitting there?
No, you haven't paid connection fees until...
No, I understand the connection fee, but I've been paying a Melrose fee.
I don't know the answer to that, because I'm not sure which Melrose. You're talking about the northeast area?
Yes.
Those are for other impacts, beyond, you know, capacity-related things. There is, as we look at, I think in the traffic impact fees, there is a special fee for northeast because of a chunk of that Melrose fees that I believe you're talking about. I don't believe that those have mitigated growth impacts for permits that haven't been pulled yet.
So I'm looking at a fee increase by September of 2017?
Probably not. Probably be at least October, November.
Well, I got to say, I think something's wrong with that picture. You know, I think when people come in and we tell them how much it's going to cost to build up their area there, and they're small little areas, and they're, you know, they, I just, I have a little bit of a problem with bumping up their fees. I do.
This has happened for the last 25, 30 years.
I don't care. I have a problem with it. That's all I'm saying.
Well, the thing of it is, by the time Mr. Guthridge knows what that fee is, he will have time to have adjusted whatever that cost is and pass it on to the homeowner, because the homeowner's the one that ultimately pays it. So very seldom does the builder end up paying this.
Yeah, but we're talking about October.
Well, it could be October, but then you've got to add another 30 days on that, because you can't assess the fee for another 30 days even after it's approved. So I mean, you're talking November, December. I don't know how many homes you got left, Mike, but...
Well, I got, you know, I got a few, and that's what I'm saying. So...
Either get the permit...
Is there any way that I could be able to find out what this fee is, so we can sort of...
Sure.
Yeah, but I mean, today or tomorrow?
No.
No.
Do we have any idea?
We don't even know what it is.
In our situation, when a homeowner comes in that door, I got 20, 30, 30 to 45 days before I get a permit, because I have to remember, all ours are custom, so I have to have an engineer, I have to have an architect, I have to have an engineer on the tussles, and so on and so forth. So, I mean, it isn't just like you pull it out of a box and say, that's what I'm building today.
You would have plenty of time. If you have a 45-day lead time, you're going to have plenty of time, because we've got to go through a public hearing process, and then it takes time for the fees to even be implemented.
Okay, so just so long I understand, I'm going to get charged the fee for, as of whatever this date is, on water, sewer, and drainage, which I've already put in myself. I put the water in, I put the drainage in, and then put the sewer in.
Yeah. So just for clarity, the capacity fee is not necessarily for the improvements only within your subdivision. It's for the city's NPDES permit costs and testing costs and other implications up and down dead man's gullet.
I understand that.
And so, so it's not so much what you've put in and built and paid for, it's for the impacts to the city's drainage system as a whole.
Jeez.
That's debatable. But anyway, all right, thank you.
And the other option, you know, Mayor Powers, is the pay-as-you-go is what builders have asked for. They don't want to pay it at the time of the tentative map, they don't want to pay it at the time of the final map, all upfront. They would rather be able to charge it incrementally as they pull permits. And so it's sort of, that way they can have a revenue stream without a lot of front money. So, you know, the pay at the time of the permit is generally preferred by developers.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's see. So we don't have to, first and second on that, we're going down now to the City Clerk's report.
I have nothing tonight.
Nothing? Okay. Comments by staff? We'll start with Chris.
Excuse me. I still have a job.
You, well, I thought...
I just found that one, please, for seven minutes.
All right, come on up. I thought he already spoke, but...
I still want to beat this dead horse that we got going here. That SRF loan number one, that reserve money that you were talking about that we collected, what was the number of that fund? Does anybody know?
Chris.
It was Fund 15. What did this council do? You joined those two funds together. I told you, don't combine those funds, and you did it. So now, we don't know what that money's for. It's in Fund 7. If you would have left it in Fund 15, what would it be used for? Would it be used for Fund 7, or would it be used for Fund 15? That's the question.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Walters. We forgot the question.
Can I get some kind of an answer?
Is there an answer?
Yes.
Well, I'd have to do some research. Fund 15 is still in existence. That's our, I believe it's our sewer impact fee fund for capacity fees like we were just talking about. So I would need to confirm. I don't have it memorized. I don't know if you do, Emily?
I don't have it memorized either, but we would need to do a little bit of research on that and get back to you.
That's that $12 million I'm talking about. It's still there. It's just that when you combined it, and I told you, no, don't do it, you go, oh, hey, it's...
Well, I think you're thinking about way different people. We weren't here.
You guys weren't here five, six years ago?
Combining it, we...
I wasn't.
Well, we've heard this, I mean, we...
This council, okay, maybe not you guys. I've been doing this for 12 years. Maybe not you guys.
Yeah, that's why I'm not getting why you've been doing it for 12 years now.
The council that was sitting, they combined the funds, and I said, don't do it. And they did it, and look where we're at right now. We don't know if that's, we should be using that money for Fund 15. So what's left on Fund 15? Paying down the debt service.
Okay, Emily, will you please bring us back a final answer on this one?
I would be happy to do that, Mayor, but that is part of the time that we were talking about earlier, Mr. Winkler and Mark were talking about. It's going to take a certain amount of staff time to do that analysis, because funds were joined, and there, a lot of that money was used for construction of CIP, so, and then the rates were adjusted two or three times during that period. So it will take a considerable amount of...
The basic answer that Mark has was then, it was 9 million, and you guys have spent eight, correct? And there's the 1.7...
I wouldn't object to that. I think that's fair.
Right.
And on global high level, yeah, that's accurate.
Okay.
So how did you get the other $8 million in there? You must have spent, so that first SRF loan number one, we must have spent $35 million, and you told us it was only going to cost 23.
Mayor, maybe I can recommend that staff meet, and...
Been doing it for eight years, but okay, if you want another meeting, works for me.
Well, I'm just saying, maybe staff can meet.
Right. Emily?
I'm sorry, Mr. Palazzo, what were you saying?
Saying, we can meet, and...
Discuss it offline, so we don't have to do this right at this moment, certainly.
Fine, but...
Thank you.
I think we all need to remember that, you know, the year-end books, they're audited every year, it's, the audit's closed. You can't go back and redo something that a council did 10 years ago.
No, I'm not doing, I'm not going back.
It's, we start from today, and the audit's what it is today, and the books are what they are today. You know, we, absolutely, we've changed our methodology regarding stock allocation, we've tried to correct some of those things that had gotten in a different way. And I think this is that same sort of situation, Mr. Walters.
Okay.
You know, we can't go back and fix what a previous council did about mixing the funds. We can't unmix them. It was done, and the books are audited and they're closed.
Okay. So that's the answer I'm going to get. I'll accept that. But what you have to understand is, when you're sitting up there, it's very important to do the things you're supposed to be doing.
I agree.
And don't let staff talk you into things that you know that are wrong. That's my whole point.
I agree.
Well, we do, we do review the audits every year.
Wait, I understand that.
And I'm sure if there was a surplus of 33 million, they'd be letting us know.
It's like me beating my head against the wall over there.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Walters.
You know? That's what it is.
Thank you. Okay. Chris?
Yeah, just to give you a quick update on the city annexations, I think you're all aware that Lafco approved the Eastview annexation two weeks ago. So we're expecting that land to become into the city after a consideration period and a protest hearing, probably. We're estimating mid to end November when that comes into the city. So the next steps for it would really be for the developer to work on putting in the infrastructure. The city initiated annexations. We decided to separate the industrial annexation from the Twin Cities commercial annexation. We did that because the GHG reduction plan and the 35% air quality mitigation plan required for north of Twin Cities is taking a little bit longer than anticipated, and it's proving a little bit of a challenge. In addition to that, we, as you know, we received a grant to complete the Climate Action Plan or a cap, and we believe, once we complete that cap, that that can help streamline the GHD reduction plan and the 35% air quality mitigation plan required north of Twin Cities. So we think we can kind of get an economy of scale by waiting for the cap to be completed before pushing forward on the Twin Cities land. And, you know, we've really identified the need for the industrial land. I mean, there's 100 acres for sale right now, we're getting calls on it, so it was really important for us to get that annexed as soon as possible. So what we have is the environmental document for the industrial area, actually on the streets. I'm going to put a copy in your box this week and actually email you a copy to review. We're planning on bringing it to Planning Commission in September, and then to you in October. With that, we'll plan on working on the Twin Cities annexation, probably again when the cap is near complete, and we're thinking mid to end of 2018. So I'll give you progress reports as we move along, and I am bringing back to you, or to you at the next council meeting, approval to sign the grant from the Energy Council for $650,000 to do the Climate Action Plan and the other two master plans that were talked about.
Great, thank you. Steve?
I don't have any further...
He's about talked out? Okay. Emily?
Nothing further.
Okay, Mark?
We'd like to say that we...
We now have lights at the soccer fields over there at Walker Park, so...
Oy.
Big Armando, take it away.
(laughing). Laura? Okay, Armando?
I know I stepped out when you guys issued that money to the IEDC. I just wanted to thank you for your continued support. Thank you.
Chief?
So, in the year and five months I've been here, I think my job has been to go in and evaluate and look at better ways of doing business. And I think that we're making tremendous progress within the Police Department. And through that, what you have to do is make sure that you're investing in your people, investing in the community, and really looking at the processes and the way you do things. So first, our National Night Out was amazing. Despite the heat, we had a great turnout, tremendous military support. I think it kind of got missed a little bit, but we did actually have the only flyover in National Night Out. So Coast Guard came out in full strength, it was amazing. Then also, investing in people. Lieutenant Kalnowski completed his Command College, which is a law enforcement program looking at futures, the future of law enforcement, future of cities, and what that looks at, looks like. He completed it on July 28th. That's 18 months of constant work. If you kind of put it into, it's a master's program without getting a master's degree. So he completed that, so we're impressed with that. And then finally, when we were talking about different ways of doing business, we finally, and I want to thank Donna Settles for all of her support in this, because she did a lot of work to help us achieve this, is that, you know, everybody wants to know what's going on in the city. They always want to see what happened last night in my area, who got arrested. And so what we've done historically in our department is, once a week on a Thursday, we put out a week's worth of information. Now, Monday through Friday, we're posting them, but seven days a week, if you go onto our website, you can see what happened on that calendar date. So you can see all the instances, sorry, I got that little tickle in my throat like everybody else. You can see all the instances and who was arrested just by clicking on, going onto our website, and you can click on the calendar, and you can see all the incidents from the different dates. Sorry for coughing. Anyway, so that is a tremendous amount of work to try to make that so. It's something new for us, and I think the public will really be pleased to be able to just go right on the website and find it. So it's open to everybody.
So when you say our website, what website are you talking about?
So the Police Department website, if you go onto there, and right on the front page, on the right, it'll say...
And you access that how?
City of Galt.
It's the City of Galt Police Department website. So...
I don't think, when we say that, people don't know where we're talking about.
I'm sorry, yeah, WW, it's...
And there is, you know, lots of concern in the community, that they think crime stats are increasing, or that things are, you know, you're seeing a lot of that on social media, and I'm aware that that's not true. So I'd really like people to know exactly where they can access that information.
Right, no, I understand that. And so, those small feet took a lot of work, and so here we are. And so what we're going to do is, Monday through Friday, it'll be posted. On the weekends, we're not having anybody do it, but those dates are going to be posted on Monday, so you'll see Fridays, Saturdays, Sundays, posted on Monday.
Could you just CC us on those?
Absolutely.
Just make sure that we get them too, because, you know, a lot of times, we're getting asked about things, and we used to get, we used, every time something was going on that was majorly important, we used to get an email from somebody in the Police Department. I don't think we've been getting them lately.
Now, it's, the only thing, what we're doing is, we're putting the documents together and then posting them on the website.
Well, I think that we should get them first. I really do. We used to get everything, so if something, I'm not asking for every little thing, if you want to get some, but if there's something really major that's coming down, we used to get a report on it when it was going down, and said, we're continuing to work on this. And we haven't gotten that for a long, long time.
So I think we might be talking about two different things. What we're posting is that every little thing.
Yeah.
The major issues, absolutely, we send them out to you first.
Okay, because we haven't...
We just haven't had any to send to you.
Well, we have had some that I didn't, we didn't get on, so if you could please just redo that, I would appreciate it. I know the rest of the council would too. So just to say again, so we go to the City of Galt website, so people can go to the City of Galt website, click on the Police Department, City Departments, and then click on the Police Department, and they would get those, they would be able to get that information.
Correct. And I appreciate that is put up there. If you click on, this will probably be good, just click on the incident on the right-hand side of the screen. You see the incident arrest report? Click on that.
Okay, it's the top one. Okay, but this isn't showing.
Then go into, we started on the tent, so you can click on any of those dates.
Oh.
And then this pops up, and these are the incidents that occurred that day, on that calendar day. If you scroll all the way down, you'll see who was arrested in the City of Galt on that date.
And their arrests.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to be CC'd on those every day, or no? I don't. Gene?
Nothing more to add, thank you.
Okay, Kimberly, what's, is that new?
It is.
Okay.
Oh, I can't see the speaker at all.
Oh. What is it?
Yeah, so I won't get to check out the soccer fields this weekend, but I am hoping to spend some quality time at the city's baseball fields this weekend for a tournament, so...
Oh, are you playing?
Reporting back to Armando, but...
Are you playing?
I am not playing, my son is playing.
Come watch.
I'll be cheering.
Okay, we'll look for your cheering. Kurt?
Briefly, the STA meeting last week, and I did talk to Gene about this, City Manager, there's a couple of programs out there that I think we need to look into, and I think he may have talked to Public Works. There's a Neighborhood Shuttle Program that was part of the original Measure A, they've got some money, they need to spend it. So hopefully, you know, staff can get in touch with them and see if any of that, if we could use any of that money down here for implementing a program. Also, under SB 1, there's some grant funds out there. I know that's a little bit more complicated, may take some staff time, but it may be worthwhile as well. I think there's $100 million available just in grants. And then lastly, you know, there have been some people asking whether STA is going to put another measure on, whether Measure A, Measure B in next year. No decision's been made, so kind of holding off at this point.
Wow.
That's it.
Okay, Paige?
Not a lot happening, except the Youth Commission has new officers, and come to the Heritage Festival on September 9th. You'll be there, right?
Yes, I will be there.
Lori?
So it's been a while since we've met, so...
I know, huh?
Yeah. So, just to thank again the tour of Consumeness, we went on, myself, Paige, and Mark, went on the tour of Consumeness Fire District, and that was really informational, and it was a good tour. I also attended with Mr. Palazzo and myself, and the...
Karen Chow.
Yeah, the elementary district.
Gordon.
John Gordon. Yeah, part of the cast, Supervisor Natoli. We went over to see a facility that was built, who was some of the last redevelopment money ever allocated in the state of California. They signed their contract hours before the money was taken, so it was an amazing facility for kids and medical, and it's in a, it was in an area that wasn't receiving services. It was a, but it was an interesting idea about a county coming together, trying to bring services to a community. So we're going to meet again, they're going to schedule a cast meeting, Kurt, so we can meet and discuss what we, what we saw. I think everybody was, you know, it was a joint usage, I mean, it was the school districts coming together with the county, with the, it doesn't look like their city did much, but in our case, it would be that kind of thing. Kind of talking about, you know, the 45 acres and what we could envision in that, and Fair Sight School, and, you know, where that could go in the future as being what kind of facilities we could have, so. And the National Night Out was wonderful. It was, the lieutenant was great escort.
Okay, Mark?
Oh, like I said, like's been said, National Night Out, pretty awesome, other than the heat, but you know what, as it started cooling down a bit, people started coming out, it was really appreciated. A big thank you to everybody who was involved in that. On a different matter, Forest Street, wow, you guys are doing awesome stuff out there, Mark. It's really starting to look good. But a little bird's had a bug in my ear, and I got to confirm it or have it denied. Is there something going on with CDVG funds that might actually improve that out there? So, our secret squirrel staff have been working behind the scenes to talk with our funding agencies, both on the C Street, Forest Street Road Project, Complete Streets Project, to see if we got some early availability of CDVG funding, could, would they allow us to do a change order to the current contract to accelerate parking lot improvements. We're continuing to work that concept. That would require a change order that would have to come to council along with new funding